Time being six thirty, call the Halifax planning board into session. Members present, Mark Meilius, John, and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have a public hearing for six forty for a proposal for an amendment to the marijuana bylaw. We have discussion on Heron Road acceptance, and discussion on Heron Road and bylaw for foreclosed properties, discussion for sixty-nine Summit Street for a solar array, proposed changes, and other minutes that come before us. Another motion for the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Can I, we have two minutes, you want to do the bills?
Yes, you can do that.
Make a motion to pay a bill for a public hearing notice zoning change on four fourteen seventeen and four twenty-one seventeen, which is at number eight four one one, in the amount of eighty dollars.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to pay invoice number one eight five nine three for site meeting on three twenty-nine seventeen to Silva Engineering Associates in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a motion? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
I went upstairs.
We're not up there.
There are signs, I didn't look at the sign.
The door's closed.
I'm on automatic pilot.
Aren't we all? We thought we could exit quicker out of this room than that one.
That's super smart.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for April sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any other votes there? Or was it? Should we send somebody upstairs to check, make sure nobody's waiting up there?
Nobody was waiting, who's had a date tonight?
No?
All the lights were off, so I should've known, and I think I should've turned the lights off to make sure. Yeah, but even here, the elevator lights. I was just honestly on automatic pilot. And Tom's on the moment.
And we're seeing them at seven.
I want to listen to the six.
Yeah, but they were, the seven o'clock discussion, Troy's going home and coming back.
Oh, okay, yes, I want to hear you talk about marijuana.
On six forty, if you'll take your.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to reassess the planning board meeting and open up the public hearing?
Make a motion to suspend the regular planned, planning board meeting to open up the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. All right. Do we have proposed?
It's in there.
If you did not, I have no idea.
There it is.
This one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do I need to read this all out? Does anybody have, do you have copies?
I don't care.
Did you get a copy? You want to follow along or anything?
I'll just pay attention.
Oh, okay. Okay, open the public hearing to discuss the marijuana bylaw that's being proposed. What do is, any comments? Just need to go through the chair.
If you want to, just to orient yourselves, what, this is a reaction to the passage of the statewide referendum in November allowing recreational marijuana in Massachusetts. Each community's going to have to make some zoning decisions. The state's delayed a lot of the implementation of it, but I wanted, because this town, unlike a lot of communities on the South Shore, did approve the referendum, I took that as, okay, we're, we would want to allow recreational marijuana facilities here in Halifax. So with that, if you're going to allow it, then you have to start off by at least allowing it in the same district as you would allow the medical marijuana, which is the industrial zone. So what I did was write the bylaw proposal so that it would be allowed in the industrial zone via special permit through the ZBA, same type of restrictions, so that, for instance, it can't be within five hundred feet of a school or other childcare facility, things like that. And just, you know, basically, it'll leave the same restrictions we set up for medical. We don't have anything right now, there were no, as far as I know, no one's ever applied since the medical marijuana facilities were allowed to come to Halifax. That might be a little bit different with recreational, we'll see what happens. But if the bylaw doesn't pass the town meeting, then that's an indication to me that the townspeople might say, well, we're fine for allowing it other places, but we don't want it here, in which case, the next course would be twofold. One, we'd have to pass a townwide ballot measure to prohibit the recreational marijuana facilities in Halifax, at the same time, house a zoning amendment that would in essence put it on the list of uses, but at the same time, put a bunch of ends to say we're not allowing any of the districts. But given that the town had said yes first, I thought it'd give that an opportunity. There's one other change in there, back when we passed the medical marijuana bylaw, we allowed it to some region industrial zone, which is the old DFI landfill. I'm not quite sure whether that was an accident or not, but what I'm recommending is that it be taken out. We still allow it in the industrial district, but I have no reason to think that we'd have a medical marijuana facility on top of the landfill. In fact, from my understanding is, at this point, that I think it's now Republic is working with McDonald Industries on the possibility of doing the solar field by filling in the swale, the depression between the two old landfills, one on the Halifax sideline, one on the Bridgewater sideline, filling the swale, and then sometime, probably several years away, putting the solar field on both sides of the line. So those were the changes I proposed. Like I said, if the town says no, then at least that gives me clues to what they want to do, and we proceed from there.
Any other comments? Discussion?
It seems that when we voted to put the medical marijuana in the industrial, that was prior to the town voicing their opinion and approving for the recreational. Since the two will go hand in hand, anyone that would be interested in the medical aspect would also want to do recreational, we need to allow them to both be in the same district for multiple reasons, but also, it seems it should be in the business district at this point. Before, where it was not voted on, the town hadn't voiced their approval of it, I think it made sense to put it in the industrial park, to keep it away from the school and things like that. But now, where it's going to be a business similar to any other one, it doesn't seem to make sense to not only take up part of the industrial zone, but why would it not be in business zone with every other business?
It also has restrictions on what it can be near, unlike its own businesses.
Those are by state.
Well, yeah, not yet, because they haven't passed any regulations yet, but this is a starting fact. If the town meeting says yes to this, then at some future date, the town, through another amendment, could add the business district to the list of places where it's allowed by special permit. I mean, let's put it this way, since November, not a single person's come to the board selectmen, as far as I know, myself, and said, I want a moratorium, or I want to allow it, or I want to allow it in this district, so myself, this is a starting point. It doesn't have to be the end point. But if you're all going to not recommend it because it's not a lot, you know, the proposal is not in the business district, then, okay, and town meeting agrees with you, then we'll have nothing, as it may tend to allow it. At least this is a starting point. Then if the town meeting wants to amend it at a future town meeting, then that'll be fine, but I don't think that if you try and amend it now to allow the business district, you'll be able to do that legally, because the townspeople have not been informed that now it's going to be a possibility.
This is a question of where to locate a facility to sell the marijuana, not to use it.
Yes, yep.
Yes.
So it's a business just like any other business, and I'm not sure of any other restrictions that we have as far as putting other businesses in the industrial zone. I can look into it, but it's the first one I've been aware of. I don't know if anyone else is aware of one?
Well, there's different, there's different types of businesses that are only allowed in the industrial. I mean, auto body.
Yeah, I think our entertainment facility, if we ever had a adult entertainment facility, we're going to be.
What about a retail store?
Well, I don't, I wouldn't really store with a adult.
No, but I would consider a place that sold recreational and medical marijuana as a retail store.
Some would, some people wouldn't.
I'm not sure how, how the definition of a retail store, I don't see how anyone could confuse that. It's sound product for money, right? Isn't that retail? It's not.
As Charlie said, there's nothing like regulations on, you know, this thing passed without the state having the time to really spend on different regulations where along, you know, it's not just about selling marijuana, it's also edibles, and you don't want kids walking by seeing, you know, what appears to be candy. I think it's, it's a little different than a normal liquor store, in my personal opinion.
My question, isn't it retail? That was my question.
I would disagree with you.
Okay.
What I am saying, however, is a couple of things. First of all, this is, as I said earlier, it's a starting proposal. If the town wants to allow it in the business district, it has every ability to do so, all it takes is the planning board to come up with an amendment, all it takes is ten residents to come up with an amendment. If they want to further allow it in other districts, have at it, not a problem. I mean, the planning board certainly had an opportunity during the eighteen, nineteen months to come up with its own proposal. No one did, I thought I wanted to be a little proactive and get ahead of the curve and do this as a starting point. But like I said, no one has come to me and asked, I want to be able to do this, or I don't want to allow it in town. So I said, fine, we allow it in the industrial district, let's allow the recreational in the industrial district. And as I said, you know, you all, and, I guess it depends on what the reasons are, I'll try and figure it out based on the conversation at town meeting, as to what the townspeople want to do. But if the townspeople say, we're voting against this proposal because it doesn't allow it in the business district, and it's clear, okay, fine, we've got an indication. Of course, I don't know in terms of our timing versus the state's timing of implementation, how that, all that's going to fit together. I don't want a situation where we're open in everything to allow. If we haven't done something in time, if the state gets ahead of us and puts something together and it doesn't visit enough time, because I can't see us having, for instance, a special town meeting on just this one subject.
Now, was there ever, was there ever a reason why it wasn't, medical marijuana wasn't originally allowed in business districts to begin with? Why was it pushed to industrial?
Basically, we wanted to have us, I think there was maybe a philosophy, if nothing else, in saying, this is a very limited type of drug, it's not something that, in fact, will be, all these certain people can use it, and they serve, you know, certain circumstances to sell it, so let's put it in a more restricted area rather than the general retail space.
Okay.
And again, and we've again had this, that's been on the books, you know, for what, a couple of years, and again, not a single person has come to you all, not a single person has come to the selectman and said, hey, we think this needs to be changed, we think we should allow it in the business district or any other district.
Or even come forward to ask for it.
The one thing, though, that, I mean, I could, I see from, from just the angle of opening it up, because everyone should have a fair opportunity to, to know, to actually have a good business. As you know, if you can't, a lot of times, you can't see it from the street, how the, how is a business owner going to make any business unless word of mouth? I mean, I understand the visibility thing, I wouldn't want kids walking by seeing edibles and anything like that, but in the proposed bylaw, it states that there will be no displayed products in facilities, windows are visible from street or parking lot. So that takes care of that right away. If the, if the parents don't, you know, police their children to say, you know, well, walking by, let's say they're in the Walmart area or any of the, the, you know, where Cumberland Farms, if they open one up there, I mean, it's up to the parents to decide whether or not they want to have their kids walk by it or whatnot. So it's true, it's really true, but that's.
And if, and if certain, what, I mean, if, but if, like, put it this way, you're twelve years old, your parent might very allow, very well allow you to bicycle down to Cumberland Farms and get a gallon of milk.
Yeah.
They're going to go by the store. So I don't, if they're five years old, that argument might hold water, but not after a certain age.
There's also security systems too, though, here, also in your bylaw, saying that, you know, just as a liquor store, for example, I understand liquor stores have been in place forever, and you see a young kid walk into a liquor store, they're going to throw you out. You know, the liquor store's right down the street from there, I see kids ride their bikes right by there, and that's not in an industrial area. So just saying that they have a good spot, they get great business, I think it's a fair opportunity for other businesses that want to come in and try and make money, pay for their special permit, bring income into the town, pay their taxes, I think it's a great opportunity. Within reasons of security. I would hate to see where the, the younger, you know, younger age people get involved with something that is, that, that could be a drug, or any kind of, of any, of any kind of abuse. I don't want kids to deal with that, but I think that opening it up into a business district will probably bring more income and profitability to the town, too.
Well, I, I would just note that I would have appreciated the planning board to actually come up with that as a planning board before we submitted this, that, you know, if you guys felt that strongly about it, then we should have been talking about it.
Well, I think like Charlie said, you know, this is a starting point. That can be changed at a later time.
Or we can pass over it.
Well, yeah, but I think it opens us, we're not in a good position to decide where we want to allow it if we don't have something on the books. I'd rather at least have it as a starting point. And like I said earlier, there's nothing preventing the planning board from bringing its own amendment to a future town meeting. And there's a fair chance why I've won this fall first. At that point, the planning board wants to add it, bring the amendment in to allow it by special permit in the business district, and I'm agnostic about it. I mean, in a sense of, I, I mean, I don't have a personal opinion about allowing it in the business district, or for that matter, industrial district, but if we were going to allow it, we had to start off by at least allowing it in the same district as we are with medical marijuana.
Right, and as Charlie stated, the reason why we chose the medical at first is that we knew it was a restricted area, that's where we had adult entertainment, and it made sense to do it that way. And so if we're going to do something different, then I would ask that you make sure that you get public safety involved in your conversation about making a business.
Well, I think if it came to that, there would be another hearing for that, I mean, that would, yep.
I, I've been listening, and I'm kind of on board with Charlie here, and I'm kind of, I am on board with Charlie. I think we need to start someplace. I totally agree that a business is a business, and the business district, I don't have an issue with. My concern is where the state hasn't stepped forward yet and set any regulations, that may kind of conflict with what we end up doing down the road. I think for the time being, at least, if we put it in the industrial with the medical marijuana, we've made a start, and to everybody's point, we're only a couple of months away from another town meeting. We want to clean it up, and hopefully, maybe the state will get on board and get their act together, which is doubtful, but there's always a possibility. And then we can, then we can make it make sense.
Well, the other thing is, we can take a look at what they come up with at that point. But it does give us a starting point, and I think everybody has kind of reiterated the same thing, nobody's come forward either.
Yeah, so this way, we can propose it to the town, see how they feel, that's, that's what we should be doing, figure out what the majority of the people would like.
Okay, any more discussion? So with this article, the planning board needs to make a motion at town meeting?
With recommendation.
The three members present, you want, you want to take a vote?
I'll make a motion for the planning board to accept and endorse article number forty-eight.
Do you have a motion to accept? Is there a second? And all, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
For all I know, it might be the first article left, or, or not after the first board, I'm just.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing, resume the planning board meeting.
Make a motion to, to end the public hearing and reopen the planning board meeting.
There's a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we want to wait until seven, or?
Well, it's not a public hearing, so.
It was just, it was just the appointment for seven?
Yeah. I just gave them time.
Okay. So we open comments from the selectmen about the Heron Road acceptance?
I think, first of all, I actually put this on your agenda.
We hope to do that more this year.
Put it on the floor, or put it on the agenda? I think I asked to meet with you because we're at a standstill as far as making a decision whether to accept Heron Road or not, and there were, my main question is that, and I questioned your decision, I've just questioned the method by which you came to the decision. You know, you've had your engineer, you had a public hearing at the time, was everybody given an opportunity to voice their opinions at the meetings, and what was the basis for your decision?
Yeah, we did discuss it, and I think we all, well, I know we all had a chance to actually go out there and see it, I know I personally drove up and down the driveway, but the, as much as, and I stated, as much as I would like to help Mr. Anis, who has an issue with it, I don't, I personally did not see an issue with it, and based my opinion on the review engineer. I don't, I don't see why we should have went against that in any way. Unfortunately, to me, I know it's an expense, but if Mr. Anis was able to have a professional give his opinion that was in opposition, that would give us something to look over again. But as of right now, the professional opinion is that it's acceptable. There was no reason for us to go against that. I mean, we've, we've counted on that review engineer many times, and there's no reason for us to go against him. As much as I'd like to see Mr. Anis happy with what he got, I'm not sure that it's, technically speaking, incorrect.
Could you, could you, at least for my identification, could you give me the anecdote of the engineer piece and say that?
He said by, by engineering standards, it's acceptable. Basically, you know, Mr. Anis's driveway is different than all the other driveways in there. And the, the fact that his are different, his is different, all the other driveways go from the road right to the lot without rising the height of the sidewalk. His driveway, when you leave the road, you go up over the sidewalk height. On all the others, the sidewalk comes down to that. And we did call the developer back in about that, we discussed that before, and we were told that that driveway was done right. And basically, if you look at the profile of the road, it should come up before it goes down. So the other driveways are not the same as his driveway. They don't really meet the plan. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, should they all have been done the same? Yeah, but as far as the engineer's concerned, it's acceptable the way it is, but it's not the same as the others. And Mr. Anis had, had talked to us, and he said that he hoped that he would have gotten the same consideration as the other driveways in there. I don't think he did, but, you know, is that acceptable? That's where the question comes in.
I'd also like to add that I believe we did send it out, and they actually did redo that driveway to make it more acceptable. So we did take steps to make, make this correct.
The only thing is, nobody was notified that that was going to happen, so there wasn't any input on how that happened. Mr. Anis was not approached and told that it was going to happen or when it was going to happen, so he had no, no say in what happened there.
That's unfortunate.
I, I only have to offer what I offered in our own way, because I physically drove the road myself.
I, I only have to offer what I offered in our own view because I physically drove the road myself, the driveway myself. And it was, it was usable. Wasn't what I would have liked to have seen for myself, no. But I was kind of left between a rock and a hard place myself. Wasn't happy about it, but I can't say that it was unusable. I mean, the transition was a little bit more severe obviously than everybody else's, but it was, it was doable. I, I think I commented in a perfect world, I would have rather seen it depressed.
Anybody else? Stanis?
Yes. I made up a sketch which I did show the selected, but you people haven't seen it. And it has to do with the sidewalks.
Right.
And this is a profile view. My driveway was complete in, in stone before the first saw hole was dug. And it was, it used this profile, it was, was stone and this was with a sidewalk and then the berm down to the level of the, the road. When they came in and put the top coat on the road and the sidewalk, it raised it up like this and they left me with this, they just beveled a little bit off on the edge down to my grade, which forced me to go out and spend a ton of money to bring it up to match, which I did. But it's still gave me this severe drop-off. As a matter of fact, I think you saw me drive out when I came over.
Well, I don't, yeah, I was behind you the whole way back on the way here.
You may have seen my, my car bouncing around, going over this edge.
So the cobblestones would be past that straight?
Cobblestones would be over here. But this, this was all stone. I had a Big Ten wheeler full of stone come in in that driveway before this was done. And that's, and this grade depicts what that was.
Okay.
Now, it's my contention that this excess amount, which I've shown here and dotted lines ought to be removed. Now, I've gone around town and I looked at everywhere there's a sidewalk.
Yep.
And it appears as though everywhere there's a sidewalk that crosses a driveway, the sidewalk is depressed. I'd yet to find one that is not. And it's very strange to me, mine with a single log not being depressed to make a nice smooth transition.
Was it?
And I don't know why, maybe there's probably nothing in the regulations that describes how this should be done.
No, part of the issue too is when they, usually the typical detail doesn't show that much, the grading, it's a foot elevations, if you're lucky, usually it's two.
It just showed a couple of lines showing there's a driveway here.
Yes.
That's it.
I'm not sure if that's an issue of was, before the, the road was roughed in, did your driveway always take that same course?
No, I had to relocate it because my original driveway went through the corner of one of the lots. So this was relocated to this current location.
Okay, so the, the complete stone drive that you have labeled here, that was already in prior to any construction?
After the first layer of pavement was put down and before the first saw hole was done, I had relocated it.
Okay.
The other three driveways that we've talked about on here were paved prior to the top coat, prior to the top coat of the sidewalk. I was never informed that Mr. Anis wanted not to pave his driveway opening where the sidewalk was, was going. If that was staked out or if I was informed, I would have informed the paving contractor to stop at his driveway. He could have put in his driveway and made the transition, but I was never told. So it hit me as a complete surprise when I heard from the board that there was a complaint about that driveway. I did nothing about it prior to the paving contractor going in, doing his job chopping and making the berm and chopping the sidewalk.
So the, the apron that you provided came after the fact?
Yeah.
Okay, so, which would explain the difference because they're gonna make the sidewalk level that whole time. So when they came in afterwards?
Well, actually, unbeknownst to Rick Springer, when that paving crew came in, they were, they were putting in the finishing touches prior to putting the top coat on. I spoke to the foreman and asked that he pay attention to what my driveway was and make it a smooth entrance. And he said he would take care of it. And then when I said...
See, I'm, I'm paying the paving contractor for SLT. They're not gonna take...
Unfortunately.
Right, they're not gonna take correction from a homeowner on the street. They're gonna, if I had known about it, I could have gone to SLT and he would have gone to the paving contractor. It would have been solved at that point, but I was not informed of it.
However, in the correction though, it sounds like Mr. Anis wasn't, wasn't confronted when the correction was done.
Oh, he's, well, I don't know what, what, what happened with the, with the correction or the, you know, the rework that was done on the ramp part of it. Because I got a letter and a sketch from the planning board that came to Mr. Silver, your review engineer. I forwarded that to SLT. I was not informed when they were gonna do it. I said, please take care of this. The next thing I knew, I got an invoice from him saying it was done and that was New, that was New Year's Eve. So I had no way of telling Mr. Anis that they were gonna be there because I didn't know they were gonna be there till after it was done. But they, they did what was proposed by Larry Silver, your review engineer.
Yeah, but it stated in your first instance, if you knew, you're stating that if Mr. Anis, if you knew that Mr. Anis had a problem with it, you would have taken care of it. Knowing that it's now an issue and you, you issued the SLT to get completed or to the way that, you know, the specs were redrawn per se, we're gonna use that quotation marks, but they were pre-drawn, they were redrawn. The thing is, is that in that instance, wouldn't you have handheld this to make sure that, hey, please give me a heads up if, if you're going out? As a, as a developer to help a, help a homeowner?
No, he, I did. I said, let me know when you're gonna do this. And they didn't let me know until it was done. I can't force them to tell me when it's gonna be down there.
Well, I mean, as the contractor, I mean, if you're paying the bill, you, you should be able to, yeah, you should be able to tell them to let you know that they're gonna be there.
I said that though, let me know when you're gonna be there. They didn't. They let me know when it was done.
So then you now have a problem with the, the paver because in this sense, the job was not done to what you think would have been acceptable if you were there with Mr. Anis.
No. I, the job was done in coordination with the letter that came from the planning board, from the review engineer.
Yeah, I, I believe he's right where it was done and it was acceptable. Except it's not acceptable to Mr. Anis, who unfortunately has to deal with it. But from a technical standpoint, when they reworked it, it was done correctly.
Well, the thing, the, where I'm getting at is that the, the part that's really, that's bothering me is that, you know, in the, in the first instance, he, you know, Mr. Springer was stating that he would have, if, if he knew it was an issue of the driveway being at too high of a slope and, you know, that there would have been something wrong that he would have, he would have done something or at least been able to adjust the SLT. But the thing is, is that even knowing that there was an issue, now you have to raise a level of concern that the rework should be done perfectly so you don't have to rework the rework. So the thing is, is that I'm stating that it should have been, it should have been handheld and it doesn't seem like that was the case.
I don't see that. He put it in capable hands. SLT does this every day. There was no reason for him to think that SLT would not do that correctly.
Other than the fact that they didn't end up the same as the other driveways.
Mr. Springer had no reason to think that SLT would not do that correctly.
But they didn't end up like the other driveways.
True, but it ended up in an acceptable level from the review engineer.
But, but when we sent it back, we said that if those other driveways are the right way, then his isn't. His is, the others aren't.
We told him to either correct the other three or correct that one.
But this is not the same as the others.
Is it because the others were paved before this was just stone?
It's because the others, the sidewalk comes down to the driveway.
So then it couldn't be?
This, the driveway goes over the sidewalk.
The contractor will come in and if the driveway paved there, he will feather down and, you know, to the driveway, common sense. There was no paved driveway in his opening, so they went right over it.
But the driveway was there.
There was some type of driveway opening there.
It was a stone driveway?
I don't know if he was even using it at that point.
It was a stone driveway that was in use.
Yeah, I didn't, I had no way of knowing if it was in use or not.
No one asked?
What sounds like there was an affiliate, somewhat like a communication. If your engineer said it correctly, he didn't, did he definitively say he wanted it sloped down to the driveway or just put a ramp in?
What we had said was to make that driveway the same as the others or make the others the same as that. That was the combination and this still is not the same as the others.
But you can't make driveways the same. Your grading coming off of the road is gonna be different in every lot. So you can't say that the first ten feet have to be at a ridiculous slope.
You either go over the dri, you either go over the sidewalk or the sidewalk goes to the driveway. All of the others go to the side, the sidewalk goes to the driveway. So, I mean, that's the difference.
I'm not an engineer, but I think there was an assumption made on the, whoever did the contract, did the work, that possibly that the driveway was gonna be laid down and they would put it up to the sidewalk. Sure enough, the sidewalk, and that's an assumption, you know, not being anything else. I feel badly that the whole situation has come to this, you know, but we've gotta make a recommendation or not to accept hearing road.
I wonder is this though, too, is that the foreman was notified? And I think that should, that would have fallen on the for, on the first time. First time, foreman was notified and there should have been some sort of communication between the foreman and the developer. And in this case, that didn't, that didn't happen. Now, second time around, Mr. Anis, you can, you can answer this if you want. Did you notify the foreman or see the foreman on the rework?
The first day that they were there for the rework and they were putting down the, the curvings by the catch bases and whatnot, I spoke to the person who was the, said he was the foreman of the job, who wasn't the same person who was the foreman when they put the first layer down. I had also spoken to him and he made adjustments to satisfy me. But the second fellow said that he would accommodate my wishes when he put the top coat on and it didn't happen. Unfortunately, I wasn't even there the day that they did it. I'd gone away on vacation and when I came home, I couldn't believe what I saw.
Now, were you ever in contact with the developer regarding the, these issues?
This has been an ongoing thing for the past dozen years and I've talked to him on several occasions. And in most cases, I get nowhere.
Okay. Did you try and call the developer at any point in time?
Several times and they just got to song and dance.
But we also have to understand, the developer has no loyalty to Mr. Anis unfortunately.
Well, he has an obligation. He had an obligation to put in four driveways. This is a four lot subdivision.
The obligation was to Mr. Springer, however.
Every time, every time Mr. Anis called me, I would then send an email or call SLT and ask him to get down there and fix the driveway the way the planning board, review engineer had sketched out. That's what I said to the developer. That's what he kept calling me and I kept saying, SLT said they'd get there. It's a small job for them. They're a big contractor. They're not gonna drop everything to run down there and do the driveway. They will get there and they did. And Larry Silver reviewed it after they did it and said it was acceptable. What else can I do?
It's unfortunate. I, I'm not sure if Mr. Anis feels as if the planning board themselves did enough to help you, but I hope you understand that we did. We did send the letter. We did have them redo it again. And right now, having the review engineer who stated that there was no reason for us not to accept the road, that's the professional opinion and I don't think we can base our findings on anything other than that. Like I said, if you could provide us with a different conflicting professional opinion, then we could weigh that against the one we have. But this is our review engineer who we've had a lot of successful jobs with in the past. There's no reason for us to doubt Mr. Silver's opinion.
I, I can, and what you, you were not on the board at the time that this subdivision was...
No, I believe I was, I did, I did work on the subdivision. Yep.
When, at that hearing, Mr. Silver suggested that we run the drainage for the, into the pond, which would have meant, going through, going through the fifty-foot conservation, no touch zone, which would have required a hearing of conservation and which they had, would have had the right to say no and which would have killed the whole project. As a result, we put the drainage into another pit on the other side, which is on my property. Now, that I thought was a very poor decision on his part. He should have known about this. And personally, I, I don't think that Mr. Silver is a very sharp engineer. And, and he proved it to me when he came over. He met with Gordon who's there. And he, he drove in the driveway with his big truck with big tires and he came up to the edge of the berm and went, drove up over there slower than walking speed. When him turned around, came back and crossed over at a very slow speed again. And he said, I don't see anything wrong with it. Well, he doesn't have to drive over it every day with a car.
But the, I mean, I'm not sure if the type of vehicle that drives over...
It's a residence. Most residences have automobiles.
Yeah, but I believe I saw a seven series BMW falling out of there. I mean, that thing's gotta be able to handle a decent slope. So to, to say, you know, I, I don't think you can say it's only good for a truck or it's only good for a sedan. I, I don't, I don't see how that makes a difference. If, if you owned a pickup truck, would that, I don't think that would change your opinion on...
Well, I did. It was a small pickup truck and it was a rough ride.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't find it more acceptable because you were in a pickup truck, correct?
No.
So I, that's why I believe the vehicles are relevant.
I've been paying attention to driveways where there's sidewalks around town. I've yet to find another one where the sidewalk is not depressed at the end of the driveway.
But unfortunately, I don't think that that's a, a technical reason to, to say that yours is not acceptable. Because I understand it's different, but is it wrong that that's? The professional opinion is, it is not wrong. And like I said, that's what I'm basing my acceptance or recommendation to accept.
Sidewalks and all the other driveways in town to match it then.
Because it's not a matter of making them all the same. I, I don't see that, I, I mean, they're not all supposed to look the same. That's, I, I don't see that. I mean, especially when you have different grades. I mean, if you, I mean, if they added a sidewalk on a major road in town, I mean, it's gonna change everyone's apron. It's gonna change the beginning of the driveway of everything. And it's gonna be an instance similar to yours where the driveway was there, then the road and sidewalk comes in. There, there's always gonna be a, a different transition for each one because they're all gonna be individual. And if it was all paved at the same time, it, I believe it would be different. Don't you?
Troy?
I don't see any major progress gonna be made on this particular subdivision. I don't know, fairness, mispronounced and what's going on. I have, I have a tendency to agree with, with his assumption because I think at least from what I hear, there's better communication, proper communication for the deal through. You know, people, the phone calls and stuff, they shouldn't have been made. We're doing... And I don't, I don't know any remedy to it, that it would have to be something to be done between Mr. Anis and developer or bank or whatever, because I don't know. Our accepting the road is not gonna change his driveway situation. Or if we don't accept it, it's not gonna change it. It's something that I think at this point is out of, out of our hands. And that's just how I feel about it right now. Just listening to what's going on, you know, engineer, developer, the road.
As much as we'd all like to see Mr. Anis happy, I mean, none of us are begrudging you, like, we'd all like to, but it's, I don't see where we can legally say that it's wrong.
So what you're telling me, that I have to at my own expense cut off your sidewalk, which is, will be the towns and lower it so that my, I have a smooth transition?
No, my suggestion to you was to have another professional give an opposing opinion. If you understand where I'm coming from, I'm basing my acceptance or my recommendation to accept off of a engineer's word. I would need something of equal value to oppose that. I would need another professional, professional's opinion. If you can see that from my standpoint, where I have the guy who's, he's the guy. He's the one who tells us whether it's good or not. He's the one who tells us whether it's good or not. He said good. Jolly?
Which would mean that he would in fact spend a certain sum of money, the sum to be unknown. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not saying, hey, he's probably wrong. But what, in either case, you're asking to spend money on this project. So, when you say he doesn't have to spend money on the sidewalk, but the only way he does have to spend money on the sidewalk is to spend money. It's a little bit.
Yeah, but he, he said that I was saying that he had to change it. That's not what I said.
One way or the other, he's spending money. So, and it's, and it ends, one hopes it would end in the same result, but he couldn't in fact spend money. The planer could say, sorry, we still don't agree with you. You've now spent money on the engineer. Now you've gotta spend money on the sidewalk. Now he's done it, don't.
But doesn't that make more sense to expect Mr. Anis to pursue that than for us to put that on Mr. Springer? Either way, we're saying somebody would have to spend money to make it correct.
I would, I would say no, because all the other driveways don't have that. And I'll go back to the same thing. If the others don't have it, this one shouldn't have it and that's the end of it. I mean.
For now, this is the engineer's review?
Well, the engineer's saying, is it acceptable? Acceptable to what?
What is acceptable?
Not, not to the rest of the subdivision.
That's what he said. That was his opinion.
He said that the approach into the driveway was drivable.
He said there was no reason for us not to accept the road.
Right. Well, I, I disagree with him. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay, so, but now we have a bigger issue. If we don't trust our review engineer, I mean, the, the.
Whatever. I mean, then, then accept him and say the other three have to go up. If that's acceptable, if that's the way it's supposed to be, then the other three should have the sidewalk go in front of them. That's what I'm telling you. He didn't give us an opinion on the other three.
All right, so maybe it's up to us to have him give his opinion on the other three. I, I just don't see why we should base our opinion on, on, on anything other than our review engineer's review. It, it, it just makes the most sense, right?
Didn't, didn't the board already vote three to one to accept, accept the asphalt and?
We made a motion to, to recommend that the, that the selectmen approve.
Well, the town meeting except. You recommended town meeting that we accept the road, four to one. Four, four, one against, one opposed. It was not unanimous.
Okay, but that's the process. So, the town.
That, that vote's already been cast.
That vote's been cast. The, the problem is, is we have a problem in front of us. And this is the thing that gets aggravating when we go through these subdivisions. When you get a problem and they don't get taken care of, it keeps getting kicked down the road. So, Mr. Anis is gonna have this problem. He's gonna have to come back to the town if the town accepts it and get permission to cut the sidewalk, to lower his driveway the same as everybody else's. That's where I think this should be resolved before the town gets into it. That's all. That's my opinion and I'll, I'll address that at town meeting, but, you know, we've taken our vote here. That's where we're at and, you know, it is what it is. But it can be addressed now. It could be taken care of before that. We have the parties here that could do it if they wanted to do it. If they don't, then, you know, we take it to town meeting. That's it.
Who asks for a second period review?
Well, you, you don't have time to do another second period review. The meeting's Monday.
But it's, I don't think it's.
One last thing and.
And if it doesn't get accepted Monday, it can go back up next year.
If, if, if you wanna get technical, but the sound, the town is accepting it, accepting the road, not the driveway or the sidewalk, such that it's up to the road.
They're accepting that whole layoff and that's part of it.
So, but we're not plowing the driveways.
No, but you're plowing the sidewalks.
The sidewalks will technically be.
So, if he cuts the sidewalk, he's, he's in jeopardy of, of anybody that falls on that sidewalk. So, to say he can do it later, it's, technically, he really can't do it later. It's.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, that's it. No, no, I'm not. I'm just, I'm just trying to express my opinion.
Well, thank you for giving us opportunity and I'm sorry some type of accord can solve this problem because we, we serve all citizens of the town.
Exactly.
And I'd like to be able to have a good quality of life for those nets. Obviously, it's not something that is happening at this time. Okay, Ken? Done? Thank you.
All right.
So, we're doing this publicly. The board, the board's likely gonna be moving into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the patrol officers and the fire chief. We're already putting this across the hall. I'm asking for the board to make a motion to do so and to take a roll call vote.
So moved.
Sir?
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And we would not be coming back up in the public session to make any announcements.
I don't want to talk about you all. Go away.
Go, go for it.
Thanks for the effort.
See you on Monday.
Okay.
All right, um, so we have the Summit Street floor array to discuss.
Anything else?
So, can I make an amendment at the, at the town meeting to, uh, set the road on the condition that my, the sidewalk be depressed to match the rest of it?
Yes, certainly, especially if you can get the support of, of more people for it. I, I would definitely go that route.
And having, having the board, I mean, we'll, we'll all be there for the most part. And, you know, for example, Gordon mentions it, having the board mention it even still, like, it, it's gonna go far. It, it would probably go far, but you should basically stress your disinterest or displeasement in the matter.
Because as much as I like to say, hey, go do it again, I just don't see where legally or technically I can say that, if you know what I mean. Because of, of the information that we have, I don't feel strongly about going against the review engineer, but I would love to see you get a new one. So, if you could get the support from the thing, like, that would be a, a good approach.
Town meeting's on Monday. The, the timeout involved between now and then isn't enough. Now, if I, if we'd known this was going to get to this point, I could have had the original engineer come in and, uh, and certainly would agree with me. And now, I, as I told you, I drove around town looking at other sidewalks just because this had come up this way and I, I just couldn't believe it. Gonna leave mine sticking way up in the air and everybody else is depressed, so I drove around looking. I couldn't find another one that was like mine.
Typically, typically, when you see something like yours is when, uh, you know, there's a vacant lot and later on, that gets developed and they bring the driveway out and they meet the sidewalk and come down. But other than that.
Would you accept that?
When, uh, when it's laid out in the beginning, they're not done like that.
I've been talking to Springer several times on this issue and he just gives me a song and dance each time. And he told me, the last time I talked with him, which was months ago, I was sick and tired of talking to him, that they shut down the batch plants by, no later than the fifteenth of December. So, I, I figured, well, we've got till spring now.
Oh, yep.
And he shows up New Year's Eve. And I did, I was at home the day that they did that and I drove out that afternoon and I didn't even notice it had been done. It was still just as bad. And my next door neighbor brought to my attention that they'd been there.
And you're like, hey, I, I didn't even notice a difference or it still wasn't better? I, I mean, unfortunately, we all wanted Mrs. Springer to be like, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the right thing. It, it's the right thing, if you know what I'm saying. And it's a personal opinion, but I think we were all open that he'd be like, hey, you know, I'm gonna make that right, but.
He's not that type of person.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think we all agree that that would be the, the proper thing to do. It's just that I don't feel comfortable making the, having the board recommend that he do it again because of, unfortunately, I think he's kinda got protection because of the review engineer. So, so you see where I'm saying? I think it would be.
I see what you're saying, but just, I don't agree with the reviewing.
Yeah, which, which, which that part like really stinks because that's, I mean, we, we go by that all the time. He's got the stamp. He's the professional. I mean, he's, he's unfortunately, that's, that's what we use as our resource to let us know. You know, we can do our best with reviewing them and, you know, we try to make sure that everything gets done right, but it's, al- almost all the time, we rely on the review engineers to tell us whether or not they're good. And I, I think if we start, even if we all get a gut feeling that that might not be correct, maybe we should address who we have, but I, I think it's, it'll, it would get real difficult if every time we got a review from our engineer, we doubted it. That's a, I mean, that's really tough.
In your guidelines, do you have any description of driveway entrances as opposed to?
No, see, that's what I was saying, where, uh, the details usually on a subdivision plan are, are two feet, two foot for elevation. Sometimes one in areas, but usually if you see like the grading, other than the profile for the road, uh, the contouring will actually be in like one or two foot intervals, which just, it doesn't, it's not detailed enough. Um, so if we had one that said, you know, like the, um, it should come up, you know, say three inches in the first sixteen and then runs flat, i- if, if we had something like that, then we, we could have something to prove that it's technically wrong. Unfortunately, the details usually just look like the.
I looked through this whole thing and it was vacant.
Yeah, there isn't any driveway detail.
It just looks like two curved lines and it says driveway. That's all. So, that, that's why.
For the future too. We need to make sure that, that gets in there so we don't have to deal with this subdivision.
But that's what I was saying, where you can't, you can't draw one, uh, apron or skirt detail and expect that to work in, in all of them. So, they do one detail that says, oh, you know, it's kinda gonna be this wide and look like this.
Well, if the detail shows it going to the height of the sidewalk, then that's the detail. You know what I mean?
But, but they don't.
As long as they have a key in there to say, like, it has to be of a depression of some sorts to be an easy transfer. It has, we have more leverage on saying, even if we have a peer review, that they say everything is okay and we're using the peer review to keep a clear conscience. The thing is, is that we can go back to the peer review engineer and say, hey, listen, we all, we've all drove this driveway. Yeah, there is a bump in it, but is it a smooth transfer? Maybe not. Is it an acceptable transfer? As the engineer said, yes, it's an acceptable transfer. However, there is, as stated in the, in during the public, during the regular meeting, it was a communication issue definitely between the developer and then the homeowner. And, and, and obviously the foreman of the, of the project in S L T. That's where the dispute happens and as, as Gordon said, it's gonna become an issue of now the town, if they accept this road, rather than an issue between a homeowner and a developer that's smaller. Because when, once you involve a town, now you're just gonna get fireworks versus a firecracker.
Well, I've been on the board twenty years and we've never had an issue come up before.
Until now.
Well, no, I, I mean, I mean, there's been some little issues, but they get worked out.
Right.
But it's, you know. There needs to be a detail on the plan, yes, but some, some things are unforeseen. You're not gonna get enough detail on the plan, but, but, you know. Right now, that, that could have been addressed before the town accepted it. That was my whole point.
But I think that, like, I know it didn't work out, but I think we tried, if you know what I mean. We sent the letter to, to.
I'm not, I'm not saying we didn't try, try to do it, but what I'm saying is, right now, it's be, it's between Vida and the developer. If the town accepts it, it's not between them anymore. You know, this could be, this could be taken care of with a handshake. Once the town takes it, that's not the case.
Well, my personal thing, I just hope you know that we tried and we sent them out here and we had them do it again. You know what I mean? We, we listened to what you said. We, we agreed. We sent them out there to fix it, if you know what I mean.
We were not privy to when they were gonna make the change either.
No, but I just, I just hope, you know, that we did try.
Along the way of this entire project.
Well, I, I believe I did that, did the field work out there when it was still woods and that must have been easy twelve years ago.
We did have this on a schedule every single week.
Uh, Joe Webby, actually.
It was Alan Bouchard who did the job. Joe Webby wasn't involved.
Okay, um.
And but speaking of that, I spoke to, when Joe Webby's crew was out there doing the survey for the asphalt, I spoke to him about that, this situation and asked him to make sure that it was noted on the correct. And they said they'd make a note of it. So, there've been plenty of people told that nothing got done.
If, I mean, my opinion of you being unfairly treated, like, that's my opinion. I don't think you were treated unfairly. I just, I don't see the right recourse for me to take to have them corrected again, if you know what I mean.
Pick them up to something else. Maybe I'll just cut it out and leave the paint out in the middle of the road like a dump and pick it up with a high waste in there.
They accept it. That's what they gotta do.
That's what will happen.
Okay. Moving on.
Go ahead. Appreciate you giving me your time.
Okay. All right.
Sixty-nine Summit Street. So, there is, you guys reviewed the, uh, proposed change.
So, they wanna do, take the fence out?
They just wanna change it from chain link to a, uh, the vinyl.
Across the backyard?
Yeah.
Yeah, so originally, they had the, the chain link coming down inside of the lot lines and then they wanted one closer. Uh, this neighbor actually came in and wanted, because there's no real vegetated line there now.
You want a tree?
He, he wanted something to, to block it visually. So, they were gonna put the vinyl fence up, like, right on the lot line or close to it. So, now, instead of having a, a double fenced area with the, the chain link, they just wanna use the vinyl fence as the total perimeter and security fence instead of having a, a strip and then both.
And then pl- still do the plantings on the inside?
Yeah, fence is the only change.
They're still gonna do these plantings?
It, they must, cause the, well, I didn't see anything that mentioned them.
Thirty Emerald, Emerald Green, I've provided. Yeah, they're not saying take them off, so.
Yeah, just elimination of the seven foot chain length fence. So, it seems like it's still off as the.
The neighbor.
Yeah, the, the neighbor gets, gets the privacy. They get the fence that they wanted, but it still keeps the place secure and.
Same.
Yes, still a seven foot fence. I mean, it's, it seems like you get the same security.
Better look.
So, it seems, it seems reasonable. I don't see any problems with that.
Any, okay, did the abutters need to be notified of this change or the homeowners?
Um, they have not been. Like I said, I, I would think that from the abutters where their issue was having some sort of fence or trees, would they still have that? I, like, I couldn't see that being.
If you want, we can hold this over to next meeting. We can take out the original site plan review and everything that we.
Yeah, see what we have for comments in that area.
Even though it seems like it's in the favor of the homeowners, I just think that it's better to be safe and stuff.
All right, move on to next meeting.
Because were, were they putting something in the chain link fence in that area before?
Oh, I'm not sure, like, the vinyl strips.
Yeah, that's, when he, when he actually proposed this, I asked him about the fencing, how high it was gonna be, if it's gonna be see-through, things like that. He's gonna put the vinyl, he said vinyl strappings through.
Yeah, it's right.
But it makes it look.
Tacky.
Yeah, like a seven foot tall fence kind, might as well put barbed wire at the top of it and be a, uh, a jail.
Vinyl fence would look better.
Yeah.
It was.
So, in.
Do you want me to notify the, um.
I think the homeowners.
The three abutters to that property as well?
I, I think it was. I, I think it was...
There's gonna be a discussion regarding that.
I think even an email that, like a confirmation saying that they have no problem is probably the worst. If we have to, does it have to be like a formal letter going out?
Well, I mean, you gotta send some...
Sorry?
You gotta send him something to say, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send him a letter saying that at our next meeting, we're gonna have a, um, discussion of this change that they're...
Your materials look fair. You have a paper trail there.
Yep.
That also is coming up Monday?
No, I don't think so.
I thought it is. Because it's not zoning. I don't think it was coming to us for the hearing.
Right. I don't know if that's gonna be on the watch or not.
It's kinda crazy. You're gonna charge people, you've got an abandoned property and you're gonna charge them a fee?
Was there, was there any like backup on this or did you just get the, yeah?
Charlie just gave it to me and I gave it to zoning board. I'll give it to you guys.
I'm sure at some point in time we're gonna have to...
There's a small group of people that want the town to buy up the abandoned properties.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
That sounds like a good one. Do a second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.